I'm gonna gavel this and then we're gonna wait five seconds before I call the meeting in order. Good evening and welcome to the town of Sykesville mayor and town council meeting. Today is Monday, December eleventh, twenty twenty-three. We'll call the meeting's order at seven o'clock. And as we begin this meeting with, as we begin all things with the pledge of allegiance followed by a brief moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That moment of silence, please. Joe, I turn to you and ask, is anyone signed up for public comment?
No one has signed up for comment.
I shall skip. My little short adage. Okay, that brings us to our consent agenda, which includes only the minutes from November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, um, as well as our twenty twenty-four meeting dates and holidays. Has everyone reviewed both of those items? Any questions, concerns? Okay, and I had submitted and allowed you all to see those edits to Carrie to our clerk, and she's got those up to date now, so uh, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the consent agenda with changes made to the minutes per the mayor's request.
Thank you so much, Councilman Grassley. And a second from Councilman Dyer, all in favor of the consent agenda approval, say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Any denials of that? Okay, here we go. Consent agenda approved unanimously. Um, six to zero because we're down one this evening. First item of new business is to consider, discuss, and potentially and most likely act on the curbside solid waste and recyclable collection service for the Raincliff community. A quick item summary here, um, basically, uh, our subdivision Raincliff, um, and, and the town of Sykesville has been discussing current arrangements, uh, with their solid waste collection and recycling pickup for several years. Um, we currently provide a tax rebate in the amount of fourteen thousand four hundred and ninety dollars annually, uh, to the homeowners association at Raincliff in lieu of providing the service the way we do for all other residents, uh, with the exception of Parkside. And I'll turn to Joe for some more nitty gritty, please.
So, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so again, this was something that, uh, uh, we've been talking about at least somewhat informally over the last, uh, last at least year or so, in that, uh, the town provides a service but yet doesn't provide it to a couple of our subdivisions in town. And how best can we try to incorporate those, those services in town? So, uh, with discussions with, uh, Public Works, uh, and the HOA, trying to figure out exactly how, uh, that arrangement could work, uh, we did an analysis on, well, how much staff time would it take? Uh, where are, uh, our tipping fees and how are they gonna, uh, be increased with the, uh, additional stops? And really what it came down to is, uh, a determination of, well, if we can provide this service still through the town, but with a third party, um, if the costs were somewhat equal, it would, uh, actually benefit our, our staff time, particularly in the summer months, uh, when we're doing, uh, a lot of other things in the Public Works Department outside of, uh, just trash pickup, trash and recycling pickup. Um, so we did release, uh, an RFP, uh, we had, uh, two responses, one being the, uh, current provider with the trash recycling services over in Raincliff, um, uh, at the low bid at, uh, it was thirty-two thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars on an annual, uh, uh, annual cost. Um, and again, we evaluated that with, uh, what, staff time and, uh, landfill charges and et cetera, lots of other, uh, items that would, uh, potentially impact the town's budget, uh, it became, um, uh, clear that it was basically a wash. Um, so, again, just to keep things somewhat easy and, um, uh, a little bit easier for us from a management standpoint, particularly in the summertime, it's better just to go ahead and contract with that third party. So, again, that is the recommendation tonight, uh, is to contract with, uh, Fogel's Refuge LLC at an annual expense of thirty-two thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars. Uh, they still will be, uh, we are switching out the toters. We want, again, if you're gonna be provided a ser- or if we're gonna provide a service, we do wanna use, uh, uh, our fancy black toters that we just purchased for the rest of town, so those will be distributed, uh, to the Raincliff community. As well, we will work on a, a schedule for exactly how that's gonna work, uh, with Fogels once we get them onboard.
Okay.
Uh, I do wanna say that, uh, the president of the HOA from, from Raincliff is in the audience, Mr. Jim, Jim Dunleavy. Uh, if there's any questions, uh, uh, also our Public Works Director Derek Shreves is here to, uh, answer any questions that council may have.
Great, thank you. Uh, are there any questions for staff or for either of our guests that were just announced?
So, I, I did have a question, um, and I could've missed it when I read through the documentation, um, and maybe I just need a reminder. For bulk pickup, I didn't see a special line item in this for bulk pickup. How will bulk pickup, uh, work?
That will be handled through the town.
Okay.
Thanks, Jeremy. I mean, thank you, Councilman.
Just to confirm, currently we provide a, uh, tax rebate of almost fif- uh, fourteen-five to help alleviate some of the stresses to the HOA with their current trash pickup. We will not be doing that because we were gonna be taking over their current trash pickup.
That's correct. There will no longer be rebate given to the Raincliff subdivision.
That'll just be off.
Correct.
This does not affect any snow removal that we already have in place and so forth?
No, this is strictly for trash and recycling.
Okay.
Thoughtful questions, thank you, Council President. Anything from those to my right? Oh, so sorry.
That's okay. Um, I just wanna lay a marker here. I think of this as inherently governmental function.
Okay.
I'm not entirely comfortable it being outsourced. However, I respect Derek and Joe enough that if they genuinely think this is best, I will acquiesce and go along with it, but, you know, if it truly wasn't wash or the moment it hits a dollar in the other direction, I, I, I can trust our people because I've seen them do it. You know, I, I will take you at your word and therefore just say, I don't like this in general, but I will go along with it.
Understood. Thank you.
So, I just would like to give an opportunity to the HOA from Raincliff, if there's anything you'd like to share or, I mean, just to hear, we, we're hearing from staff about your opinion, we'd just like to hear from you.
If you wouldn't mind, please. Thanks, Jim.
Sorry.
No, no, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, uh, Jim Dunleavy, Raincliff HOA. Um, yeah, I just wanna thank the council for taking this matter up. Um, the agreement with the town predates my, uh, presidency and even my residency in Raincliff. Um, I understand why things were the way they are, but I'm really happy that the town is welcoming Raincliff, um, as part of the town. Uh, we, we like it here. We're not going anywhere. Um, so, uh, happy to help in any way and just glad to be part of the community.
Thank you, Jim. But a little known fact, uh, Raincliff was originally slated to be an apartment, uh, complex and, um, which is why the agreement stood in the first place or even was born, that, uh, we would not collect trash. But, um, when that plan changed, the, the latter didn't along with it. So, here we are, and, um, yes, I agree that, first of all, you've always, Raincliff and you, sir, have always been part of town. Um, and, uh, and, and I do appreciate all y'all over there, uh, being so patient while we work through this process. Thank you.
And then I would just support, um, what Councilman Dyer was saying, that if there's an opportunity to bring it completely in-house or, you know, makes more sense that we continue to keep that open as.
Thank you.
Until we do that, are you comfortable with the current company? Or were there issues that your development had?
No issues. We, we've really enjoyed working with Fogels, um, over the years. Um, they're our current contractor, just about, I think, what, uh, Joe mentioned, uh, we, they're a great part of the community. We've been worked with them for four or five years.
Okay.
Just making sure.
And it is a plus that they're, they're local, locally owned, you know, obviously, yeah.
So, the, the rebate, uh, has not been applied this year. It'll just be folded into the cost of picking up the trash starting January first?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Just wondering?
No, go on.
I mean, I saw it on the, uh, Treasury report for November, but it's December, I just wouldn't sure if it's still on.
It'll be adjusted with the first budget.
Yeah, that's what I figured.
Taking a note, he said. Okay, great. Um, yeah, and, and I actually have similar sentiments, uh, as, uh, the two council members to my left and right. And, but, but I'm, I'm comfortable with this decision, uh, or with, with the, the recommendation from staff. And, uh, I too would love to see us being able to handle all of the, um, all, all of, uh, the, the town's, uh, residents' trash and recyclable pickup. Um, but I do understand that, uh, staff is limited in resources and, uh, as far as, especially at summertime, um, to add to that, so we can revisit that as needed or as wished, uh, in the future. Okay, so with that in mind, um, is there, uh, any motion to put forth or is there a motion to put forth?
I, I'd like to put forward a motion to move to approve the proposal from Fogel's Refuge LLC, um, or otherwise known as Area Refuge Service in the amount of thirty-two thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars for curbside solid waste and recyclable collection services for the Raincliff subdivision and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents to allow these services to begin.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Schofield has a first. Uh, does anyone have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Council President, so.
One, one more question.
No, that's great. You know I always give you an opportunity to debate after the motion is, is put forth. Go ahead, Councilman Grassley.
So, uh, if there, if there becomes a problem with the contractor, do we currently have enough, uh, equipment and manpower to take up the slack if need be for, let's say, a temporary amount of time?
Yeah, if there was, if there was an issue, and again, I can let Derek, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but if there was an issue that we had to jump in, we, we could certainly provide a service on, on a temporary basis.
Okay, great.
That's very well, uh, that's thoughtful as well. Thank you, Councilman Grassley.
Just one, uh, point of discussion. So, I had the privilege of being a, uh, Raincliff, uh, homeowners association liaison, uh, for a period of time, um, a few years ago, probably four or five years ago, it's hard to believe it's that long ago. In the very first meeting that I was in, where I was, uh, representing the council in that role, this issue was brought up. Uh, it had been a longstanding issue even at that time, and I just wanna say that I'm, uh, very pleased that we're here tonight and, uh, looking into the issues. Just a matter of discussion. Thank you.
No, thank you. Okay, is there any further, uh, need for further debate? If that was really debate, I'm not sure, but we'll call it that. Uh, with, without that, then I'll call for, uh, a vote on the motion to approve the proposal from Fogel's Refuge LLC doing business as Area Refuge Service in the amount of thirty-two thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars for curbside solid waste and recyclable collection services for the Raincliff subdivision and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents to allow these services to begin. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
That looks unanimous. Any opposed? All right, that motion passes unanimously, six to zero. And that brings me to our next item of new business and the final item of new business, I believe, yes, um, is to consider, discuss, act on a rebate for Parkside Community Solid Waste and recyclable collection services. Uh, the item summary here is, um, basically this is a request to approve a tax rebate for the Parkside at Warfield subdivision, uh, for the aforementioned services. Parkside at Warfield Homeowners Association has been established with the understanding that the town would not be providing curbside solid waste collection. As such, the Parkside HOA entered into a five-year contract with a third-party provider that is not easily voidable. Keeping with past practices, the town provider that is, I'm sorry, the town would like to offer an annual rebate for taxes collected that would normally be attributed to these services. This rebate would continue until such time that the town could assume the responsibility for these services as we have just done this evening for Parkside. Joe?
Um, and again, this is, um, you know, we basically use the same model as we, uh, really just got rid of for Raincliff and, uh, did that calculation to figure out exactly how much that rebate would be. Uh, so that is the number that, that we're proposing is that nineteen thousand one hundred and forty dollars for Raincliff, or for, I'm sorry, for Parkside. It'll be hard to give it up. Um, so again, uh, Parkside's a little bit bigger, um, uh, the, the, the property tax structure's a little bit, uh, a little bit different. Again, the assessed values out there are a little, uh, a little higher, so again, that's why that number's just, just slightly more than, uh, what we were paying before. Um, but again, uh, because we didn't get in on the front end, they were a- able to enter into that, that long-term contract, I believe it also is with Fogels. Um, uh, so rather than trying to assume that contract, because again, uh, we really shouldn't be assuming a contract that we didn't bid and didn't, you know, negotiate ourselves. Um, so in lieu of doing that, we'll start providing them a rebate with the understanding that it will be limited duration only for the term of this existing contract. And when that contract expires, we'll do the same thing that we just did for Raincliff.
Understood, thank you. Um, and, uh, just for the edification of the public, uh, the esti- the, the calculation is based on the estimation that about five point five percent of the revenues collected in tax from, um, the residents here in town is dedicated to these services, so that's what we did. Just did some multiplication. So, um, any questions for staff, beginning with Councilman Dyer? No? Councilman Schofield?
When's that five-year contract over?
I think they're a year into it, so it'll be four more years.
Okay, thank you. Anything?
Now, is it gonna be, uh, uh, aggregated or is it just, this is the, this is the value for the next four years, let's say, until the contract's up?
Yeah, and again, that, sticking with past practice, there was a number that was decided on the front end and it stayed consistent.
Okay.
And that'll allow us to budget and the, and the HOA to budget as well, so, yeah.
And then, did they come to us or was this, we outreach to them?
They definitely came to us, but I had actually brought it up when I was, um, with them two Aprils ago, uh, knocking on doors. So, it's been a conversation for a while.
Excellent.
Same topic came up in the most, uh, recent round of knocking on doors as well, so just so you know, yeah.
And also at my, uh, citizen advisory, uh, council meetings.
And we'll say we've been invited to an HOA meeting in January, though the date has not been set yet.
Great, thank you. That's good to know as well. Uh, if there are no other questions for staff, is there a motion to bring this, uh, item forward?
I'll make a motion to approve the tax rebate in the amount of nineteen thousand one hundred and forty dollars for curbside solid waste and recyclable collection services for the Parkside at Warfield Homeowners Association authorize the mayor to sign all the necessary documents to begin this agreement.
Thank you, Councilman Grassley. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Council President with the second. Uh, before I call for a vote, do any council members have the need to debate this, uh, any for? There was the inhale. I thought it was coming from Councilman Grassley. Anyone? Okay, so, uh, hearing none, I will repeat the motion and then call for that vote. The motion is to approve the tax rebate in the amount of nineteen thousand one hundred and forty dollars for curbside solid waste and recyclable collection services for the Parkside, bless you, at Warfield Homeowners Association and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents to begin this agreement. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Six to zero unanimously approve the motion. Um, that brings us to, um, our announcements and reports. The next meeting is Monday, January eighth, twenty twenty-four. That sounds funny. We have volunteer opportunities available on the Historic District Commission, Parks and Recreation Commission, Board of Zoning Appeals, and a police auxiliary. Please email town@Sykesville.net for more information if you're interested in volunteering. And I will turn to Joe for staff updates, or do you want me to start with the treasurer?
No, no, I'm having to start. Uh, so the one item that I have listed on the, the town manager's report is just to set a public hearing date for the, um, zoning text slash maybe map amendment, uh, coming forward. Uh, so Planning Commission did make a recommendation, uh, they should be ratifying their report and recommendation at their meeting in January, and it should be ready for council, uh, at that first meeting in January as well. So, you can set the public hearing either for the eighth or
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth.
Okay, and I just looked at my calendar and.
It's back, twenty-second, sorry.
Yes.
Eighth or twenty-second?
So, I, I will not be available. I'm actually taking a vacation. On the twenty-second, I return late, late night, so, um, I will be missing that meeting.
Can we move that?
Do we need to say the eight?
It's, uh, uh, no, Monday, yes, wait. That's a good point.
No, the fifteenth is.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I thought it was in the twenties.
You're talking about MLK?
Oh, okay.
Like, maybe we had overlooked, uh, needed to shift a meeting to a Tuesday ago.
Oh, I gotta wait there.
Yeah.
Sorry.
So, if, if, if you believe that we'd be prepared to do such on the seventh, um, and all, I mean to say the eighth, thank you, Council President, then, then I'm fine with that, otherwise it would be February.
Yeah, typically what the Planning Commission looks at is just, it's just a, um, I guess a ratification of their motion that they've already made, so there's just a formal document that'll be presented to them. So, assuming that, um, there's no issues with that, we'll go ahead and set the public hearing for the eighth and, you know, if we have to move it, so be it.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe just a little bit more on that is that there was discussion about going to a business general zoning. Um, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at the playback of the meeting or not, um, or we did not, the Planning Commission did not move down that path. Uh, that would've been the only, I think we've mentioned this before, but it would've been the only property within the town that would have business general, and there are some uses to business general that are conditional uses that, um, I don't personally believe I can say it that way, uh, would be good fits. Uh, things that include, um, and, and this is not for me trying to be off color, but there are permitted uses for like adult bookstores and adult video stores and these sort of things. And it just doesn't, um, go in alignment with what I think our town is about. Um, I'm, you know, always open to debate in reference to these sort of things, but that's sort of where I am. Um, and, uh, we did have an open discussion about that in the dis- uh, meeting. Um, and so we moved over to, uh, zone text amendment, and there are some, uh, potential risks of adding this in as a conditional use. Uh, there could be other places within the community, uh, that we could establish this same sort of process. I believe that the plan is to put in a conditional use for, uh, service stations, and that's what, uh, you all will be seeing when it comes back. But I wanted to give you a little bit of time to think about that, um, as we move forward. I did vote in the favor of moving forward with it, just so that, you know, that was public, uh, when I voted that way, but I wanted to share that with you all as well. So, just for you to be mindful of the potential risks of adding that as conditional use.
Thank you, Councilman Schofield.
Yeah, watch the, uh, watch the playback. You guys.
But not all at one time. Just don't do that.
Oh, I mean, all of us?
Yeah, all of us at one time.
I, I've already watched it. I've already watched it. It was a good discussion.
Great.
I caught the joke too, but really.
Thank you. Oh.
Two other quick ones?
Yes, please.
Um, so just to let everybody know, so several, uh, sidewalk improvements are going on, uh, well, not as we speak, but ongoing. Uh, uh, a couple of spots there around Shannon Run Park, uh, and then there's also a storm drain inlet that had kinda collapsed on a, on a sidewalk there. So, all those sidewalks are being replaced right now. And then the spot, uh, Jennifer and Calorama is also being replaced. So, right now they're dug up. They're supposed to be poured tomorrow. Hopefully it doesn't snow again. Uh, they should get those, uh, uh, back in place and ready for walking.
Joe, the one on the corner of Calorama and Jennifer?
Yes.
I thought that Verizon was the one that dug it up. Are they going to be replacing it?
Probably not. So, yeah, yeah, it's, it had, it had been so long for them and we had reached out to them several times and just could never get anybody to really respond to it. So, rather than leaving a broken sidewalk there, we, we just went ahead and did it.
Okay, I just don't want them to dig it up again when they have to come back out.
No, well, hopefully they don't have to do that. No. Hopefully they have the conduit in place and they won't come back out and dig up those sidewalks. Um, and then the only other one was, uh, tomorrow morning, we'll be meeting with state highways regarding Main Street. Um, so, uh, recently, obviously, uh, the state highways came through and repaved everything, and we were very appreciative of that. However, when they did re-strike Main Street, um, some of the, the lines that went in place, um, uh, basically took away some of the parking along Main Street. So, we're having them come out to take another look at that and make sure, see if we can, uh, guess, recapture some of those parking spaces. So, we'll be meeting with them on, uh, tomorrow morning.
Excellent, thank you. I know several merchants will be very pleased, um, that several have brought it to my attention, so. Okay, um, that brings us to staff updates, specifically the treasurer's report. Please, Mr. Treasurer, Craig. Thank you.
Do you like the way it's said?
No, but I, I know you want to.
Doesn't really match, though.
Don't start any precedents up there, Craig.
I'm watching.
That's the only hat that doesn't have to match. Now, it's not gonna fall.
That's true.
Good evening, everybody. The, uh, it's that time of year, so I hope everybody's being good out there. Uh, at this time, I'd like to present the November Treasury's report. Hopefully everyone got a chance to peruse it. I know it was like a day later than usual, but it was a tough turnaround, so. As of the date of the November, uh, report, we're doing very well at the moment. Revenues are exceeding expenses by approximately six hundred eighty-three thousand. Uh, not too shabby. Um, in comparison, a year ago at this timeframe, we were basically about, uh, two eighty-three. So, we're like four hundred thousand higher at this point. Uh, the differences mainly were, uh, we did some repaving a year ago already by now. We've already spent like the highway user type revenue. We've already spent like two hundred some thousand. Whereas this, at this point, we haven't really done any type of major repaving yet, as well as some of the expense, I mean, the, uh, income items came in a little higher already, which was, was good. Uh, I think I might've mentioned last time that we were gonna start going down, and here we went up, so. One more month, December now will.
Remind me not to ask you who's gonna win the football game.
This time, though, toward December, we'll show a little decline.
The opposite.
That's right.
Um, other, in terms of expenses, everything's pretty steady. Um, on the check register, there's only a couple that are, I guess, stand out in terms of the level of monies. Uh, Charles Coonlin, how you spell it? Coonlin?
Coon.
Coon. Uh, we spent about sixteen grand there to work on the used dump truck that we purchased late fiscal year twenty-three. That was a capital outlay. Uh, we spent some money with KCI, as we do every month, about fifteen, four hundred. That related to the Sandusky lot. Uh, we spent about eight-six-hundred with the Cleaver excavation, which was the work on the little Sykes storm drain issue that we were aware of and finally got around to fixing, which was good. And then we also spent about twenty-two thousand with white pine paving, which is for the linear park repaving job, which was covered under the Open Space Grant, which is important that that's covered. Um, other than that, it's pretty, like I said, pretty straightforward. I don't know if anyone has any questions at this time?
I do not, great. Does anyone over here to my left? To my right?
Looks good. Thank you.
Let's give a shout out to Heartland Lane. The decorations are a notch higher.
Okay, now hold up one second. I feel like the lobbying that's happening right now, maybe.
But there's an individual that wins every year anyway, so does it really matter? I'm lobbying. Cause you give it to him every year.
That whole stretch there is pretty impressive.
It's a very competitive stretch, I know.
It still matters your lobbying. I'm just saying, a little bit, saying.
Craig, can I just, the signs are downstairs? Just, just letting you know.
So, take one now. I know I'm not gonna win, I'm just saying, my street in general is really picked up a notch, so. Spend a little, make a little slower.
If anybody has a right to be souring in this room, it's me. My lights are straighter than anyone's in town and I can't even get voted on, so. Thank you, Treasurer. Craig, appreciate you.
Thank you. Don't forget to make that announcement.
Oh, I won't. That's on my list, that's for sure. Thank you. Um, that brings us to our public safety report, and I'll invite Chief Spalding to the pulpit.
What that, not elector, it's a pulpit.
That's right.
I'm just thankful for once I didn't get gigged by you on for some expense at the police department. Thank you, Craig.
Well, that has everything to do with you, Chief.
Is that my Christmas gift?
That, no, there was nothing for you to get gigged on.
You keep it aligned, that's how it works. I'm trying. I, I am trying. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Uh, before I go into the public safety report, I did want to address one question that I had received from, uh, a council member regarding, it was a burglary, um, or was it?
Two-seven-four.
Yeah, yeah, two-seven-four was a burglar in disturbance on bunker hill. Uh, the question was whether the, uh, the victim and the suspect knew each other, and in this case, they did not. It was a complete stranger that walked into someone's house. Apparently a little intoxicated and was a little lost, so they did not know each other. Yes.
Especially on Thanksgiving weekend.
Listen, did the, did the person, is, did he live in the neighborhood or did?
No, it was from Forsyth Road, so it was, was a little off. Apparently he'd been dri- dropped or dumped there and just walked in and made himself comfortable. On the lazy boy. That happens more than you realize.
Lock your doors.
All right, so moving along, 'cause I don't wanna take up too much time, because we have, uh, Lieutenant Queen here tonight to give you a presentation. Uh, public safety report covers the period November twenty-first through December fourth, and as you can see, uh, not a super busy period. Um, three hundred and ninety-four total events. Um, just a couple of highlights, twenty-six foot patrols, so they are, the officers are still out there, even in cold weather, doing foot patrols. It's always good to see. Two hundred and twenty-one patrol checks, uh, sixteen traffic enforcement initiatives, again, uh, total of three hundred and ninety-four total events. And of those events, in addition to those events, there was nine incident reports written during this period. I'd be more happy to answer any questions you have about this.
Chief, a quick question. Those two vehicles that were stolen, were they recovered?
They were, Baltimore County, Catkinsville, together.
Really?
Were they usable?
Yeah, they're still drivable.
Okay.
Well, the steering columns are busted out, so they'll have to have some repairs done, but Sergeant Lacy did a phenomenal job of following up on, on these cases and was able to actually, uh, return the key fobs to, to the owners and, uh, let them know how to go about retrieving their vehicles, so.
Excellent.
Thank you. It's good news.
I guess.
Thank you, Sergeant Lacy, for finding them.
Yeah, sometimes you're almost better off not getting it back if it's been, been damaged, but I, I think in this, these particular cases with some, uh, work, interior work done on the steering column. But I think in this, these particular cases, with some work, interior work done on the steering columns, they'll, they'll still be functional.
Chief, have, as a result of, of your announcement about the two vehicle thefts in town, did you see an uptake in the number, or the interest, I should say, in, in the steering wheel locks?
We have, yeah. I think it was, I don't know, how many, Lieutenant, do you know? I think it was in the sixties that they've been giving out so far?
We're in our, I think we're in the hundreds now.
I know we ordered another batch, so.
Because as of last week, it was ninety-two.
It was a hundred twenty initially he ordered, and I think he ordered another ninety, something like that.
As of last week, we had given out ninety-two.
Okay, thank you.
And we've got an intern starting next week from one of the, one of the area colleges. And that will be his, part of his duties is to hand out the steering wheel locks to people that come in for him.
Excellent. I'm glad that, that people are hearing about it now and taking advantage of it, that's great.
Particularly with those two, two particular types of vehicles, you should absolutely have one.
And also I appreciate the sharing of the, the link. I am a Kia owner and I was pretty sure I wasn't on the list. I'm not, but I'm, I'm glad that, that, I, I'm thankful you made that available to the public on the Facebook page.
You may have also noticed that we also put that on Nixle, we sent a Nixle out about, I think you mentioned that, as well as the Neighbor App. To try to get the word out, Facebook and of course, the, the flyers that were delivered to everybody's home. So we tried to cover the bases on that, get the word out.
Much appreciated.
Of course.
Is that happening broader in Carroll County?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
Absolutely. In fact, just last week, there was two more cars stolen, but it was a different type of group, or at least a different MO, as, as we call it. It was Antwerp and right up here in Eldersburg, and there were two high-end vehicles stolen right off the lot. So a different type of, of group that were, were out doing that sort of thing. We would assume they weren't Kias or Hyundays, but high, high-end cars were stolen, so it continues. Big problem right now.
And what I meant was the messaging around, you know, the availability of these different tools.
Not the actual crime, but is the messaging happening in the greater Carroll?
That's right.
Yeah.
Like, is there, like, you working with the other?
Oh, absolutely.
Department, I, I know that it always happens, so I was just certain.
It does, yeah, and Sergeant Lacy's gone to several meetings with all the other agencies in, in the county. In fact, the sheriff's office reached out to us, cause they're, they're going to get some steering wheel locks themselves and start giving them out. So we kinda set the precedent on that one and other agencies are following too, so it's good to see.
So, question, one of the incidents were involved fentanyl again. Are we seeing just fentanyl, are we seeing xylazine, and where are we on the, like, the naloxone and?
I don't think we've seen a whole lot of xylazine here in this county. Fentanyl, absolutely, continues to be the, the number one over, over prescribed or illegal drug that people are overdosing on, so absolutely.
Where are we on getting more naloxone into the community? And I think we had talked before, that are, are officers doing lead behinds and things like that in that process?
I'm sorry, doing what?
The lead behind.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, I know the fire department does that as well. We're still working on some events, so we have a meeting coming up, I think in early January with the health department to do the community event where we'll talk about naloxone distribution and, and that sort of thing.
Is that on the seven, the January seventeenth one? Cause I was gonna announce that in our council updates.
I would have to double check my calendar, I wanna say it's early January where we're meeting with them to talk about the event. And I think we will probably do the event in the spring sometime when it's, when it's warmer. I don't know whether we'll need a facility for that or we're gonna just do it out, outside. I've also invited them during twenty-twenty-four to attend some of our town events and set up a tent or booth.
Wonderful.
For, to distribute literature and maybe even hand out naloxone to people that are there, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're making progress, slowly but surely. Any other questions? Real quickly, I just wanna highlight a couple of things. You may have seen on Facebook where Lieutenant Kilgore and Lieutenant Queen both attended a meet and greet at Barrier Free. They did an outstanding job, we had a total of, what, eleven people there? I think you had the entire auxiliary unit there. We were invited to come over and, and meet and greet with them and the staff and parents and clients. And from what I understand, it went very well, and they were very appreciative of it. So a great community event, and we had a, a great, great showing there, so.
Of all the things I've, I've read on all of your reports for the entire year, that one made me the happiest.
Wow.
Yeah.
Okay.
Besides our top cop, other than.
Okay. Close second, right?
Close second, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
Kudos to those two for taking the lead on that and, and making all the arrangements and being here, we appreciate it, thank you. I forgot about mentioning this person last time, but our, our recruit is still doing well, halfway through now, I think thirteen weeks.
Excellent.
Actually, he attended that meet and greet, so he's already trying to participate in town events and, and community events. He's doing well, so I think it's all downhill from here, hopefully. I think he's still had what EVOC to do yet, yeah, the emergency vehicle driving. But I have no doubt that he'll, he'll pass and be joining us here in April, so.
Love it.
Much needed, looking forward to having him, absolutely. And I think that's about it. I wanna have Lieutenant Queen come up and do his presentation now, and I'll get out of your way.
Great, thank you, Chief. I should've said, with few exceptions in the room, everybody turned off their devices completely, but.
No, I'm off this week, so nobody's.
Well, good, then.
All right, so, good evening, thanks for having me. And as you can see, we're having a kind of a banner year. Even if you take my hours out of it, we're still having a banner year compared to last year. One thing I wanna note here too as well, yes, we're down one, but that's APO bond, so that's, he's in the academy.
Another one we stole.
Is another one, which is fine, which is fine with me, it makes me then wanna work harder. So, but as you can see, our hours are up. So if you kinda do the math a little bit on this, if you take sixteen-ten, that's four hours a day for three hundred and sixty-five days a year. That's about half an hour per auxiliary officer, every day putting time in. So lots of hours volunteered this year. That's roughly about fifty-five thousand dollars when you compare it. I use Independent Sector, which is kind of the standard out there. And they've run, kinda what does it cost for volunteerism and things like that throughout the United States? And for the state of Maryland, it's thirty-four dollars an hour, surprisingly enough. That was for twenty-twenty-two, and it's keep, keeps increasing year after year. So there's really a need for volunteering across, across the board. So it's about fifty-five thousand dollars of savings, which is pretty awesome. And we are up sixty-four percent, actually sixty-five percent from last year, which is, which is always a good thing. So some highlights, like on the admin piece, yeah, it's, it's kinda buried on all the other stuff. But that's like social media, that is hiring, that's recruitment, that's everything that we need to do on a kind of a daily basis or monthly basis to kinda keep things running. That's going up, cause we hired a bunch of people this year. So those numbers tend to go up as, as, as needed. The training, of course, again, we hired some more folks, but we're doing a lot more training. We're trying to stay in line with a lot of the, kind of the demands of what you all need from a town perspective, but also what the department needs of us. And as we get like new equipment and things like that, we need to train on that and learn it as well. Patrol, one of my initiatives for this year was to increase the patrol numbers, and we, we did that, we did that actually sixfold compared to last year. We've taken on some initiatives like these stuffs from Otto's and things like that, just being out and being visible, being highly visible. We've put a lot of time and efforts on that, it's kind of reactive, but we also are very proactive just being out in the community and just, just being seen, which is very important. We'll continue to increase those numbers next year as well. Events, pretty consistent with the numbers compared to last year. Probably about ten percent higher, but still consistent, cause we've added more events this year. That number looks high, but you, you've seen the events, you guys know how many people it needs to run these events, and so we're there supporting. Meetings, so again, another initiative that I wanted to set up was we meet on a monthly basis. Sometimes if you don't see each other for a while, you kinda lose that cohesiveness as a team, and I think that's important to have that cohesiveness. So we've done these monthly meetings and, so we've increased those numbers as well. And then ride-alongs, ride-alongs are very important for us. It builds that confidence in Chief, in our, you know, our unit as well, as well as the officers getting to know us. We haven't had a lot of change on the officer side, so they're starting to see us more than, and which is always a good thing. And then a lot of our folks wanna be officers, right? So it gives them an idea of kind of the real deal. So a lot going on there, a lot of hours this year. And I can't forget our crossing guards, they're very important to us. And one hundred and forty-six details, that's, was that a couple of days ago, didn't include today, so.
Are we keeping our crossing guards warm, though, cause that's important?
From what I can tell, Doug likes his, Doug likes his hat.
He does, with his, yes, his finished hat.
Offered to buy them, we, we purchase them their jackets and certainly anything they need, they know they, they just have to reach out.
I always wanna get out there and get, get them some coffee or something, every time I think of it, it's.
Are those, those, those hand warmers?
Yes, yeah, alright.
I have a vest that I just plug into a battery pack, that helps too as well, so those are pretty, pretty cool.
Christmas gift, I'm writing it down right now.
So, yeah, so, you know, when, when you have a team that just believes in, you know, the volunteerism, but believes in this town and believes in just wanting to make a difference, it shows, right? So hiring those right people. So moving to the center, so since we last talked, we, we've had a couple of training activities, just some basic policing. Talking about police hierarchy, some ethics in policing and things like that. And then the engagement with Barrier Free, that was considered training for us, cause there was a lot that we just did not know. Cause we, we just didn't know and vice versa, it was a great engagement. They have an amazing space over there, if you haven't had a chance to kinda interact and be over there, they have a great space. And I was surprised we were all able to get in there, which was pretty awesome. So, but kudos to our friends over there and everything that they're doing too as well. Lots of events, we're no longer sh- not shaving, so we did the no shave November, so. I don't know who won this one this year, Chief, I don't know. You were looking good too.
I was.
He doesn't say so himself.
But, you know, just, just kinda getting that awareness out. So a lot of social media too, I, I just wanted to bring up too, there was a couple of things the county put out on their social media, but also nationally. There were some things that have gone out and I've kind of reposted and re, things like that on just vehicle, vehicle protection and that's and what to do around the season and the holidays, so.
Yeah, that nine o'clock routine is a good, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I kinda recycled that one from last year, that nine a.m. routine, and wanted to continue to push that. So I think it's very important to just get into a routine and if, and just don't, don't mess it up, right? Just keep doing it. Ton of events, there was a couple of new ones that got thrown in there this year that we were kinda flexible on. So the Warfield Walking Tours, there was four of them, four of them, I think, four of them, that we, we helped support. Great tour, we've had some walk-ups on there, we had to actually tell people, hey, you're not part of the tour, please, please sign up. So there was value added of us being out there. And, you know, they, they put on a good, good tour, actually, it was quite interesting. And a couple special assignments from the, supporting the stuffs from Otto, and then we have this funeral procession Friday. And so just getting traffic out of town in an expedited manner, which was very important.
All with very, very last minute notice, I should say. Jeff just happened to be there and, hey Jeff, I could use some help tomorrow, we got it.
Next year, so what, kinda what we have coming up, so Toys for Tots, there's still time to fill that box over there, there's two boxes, so Toys for Tots. If you plan on looking to donate, there's still time. And then we have some engagements with McDaniel College coming up in January. So their, their law and criminal justice program out there. So we're gonna meet with a couple of the, the department heads and just again, talk with their students. We've done this with Carroll, and we've got a couple hits on that in the past. And hopefully we're, this is a new relationship that we're building with McDaniel. They're very keen on us getting, cause we've had some McDaniel students come in and do some service hours. It's like a hundred and thirty hours that they gotta do, and so it's been pretty beneficial for us too as well. And then some training, we're gonna do some cold weather stuff and some scene management things like that. So we, we have a lot planned for the first quarter. We've had, I guess, had a great year, so. But I would ask for your feedback too, of what you would see, wanna see more of from us. If we're not hitting the mark someplace, happy to, happy to take that feedback too as well. It doesn't have to be tonight, it can always, you know, email whatever, right? Whatever works best, so, questions, comments?
I have one comment. Getting this and looking at it, reading it, and it, it exemplifies exactly how thorough and attentive and thoughtful you are as, as the lieutenant and of, of the auxiliary police department. And, you know, I, I can't, I, I sing your praises all the time because I, I really believe that a strong, a, a, a strong police department is only strong when it actually has a strong auxiliary. And you guys are just an extension of, of all the things that we love about, about town and about the, about the services that, that our department offers. So thank you for your leadership, Lieutenant Queen, and, and for setting these goals and, and working to, to reach them. Appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right.
Okay.
Thank you, and I was gonna wear the hat, but that isn't on the hat.
Lieutenant Queen won't, won't brag about himself or our, our auxiliary department, but I, I, I will tell you that I've had a conversation with him about, we are the model for, our auxiliary police department is the model for Howard County Sheriff's Department's Auxiliary Department. And, and we're growing while everyone else is shrinking, so hear, hear, to, to us, so.
Congratulations.
Yeah. So that brings us to council committee reports. Does anyone here at the table have anything they'd like to share for the good of the order regarding our liaison position?
The Stark District Commission approved the new guidelines and you should be getting a copy of that shortly, probably in February we'll be approving that, or? Or, I don't know, sometime, January, February, so.
Beginning of next year.
Okay, thank you.
That was it.
That's, that's a, a big leap, that's a big accomplishment, so.
So I just wanted to thank the Parks and Rec Committee for the amazing year that we've had again, in terms of all the activities for, for everyone in town. And ended with Santa coming to town, it was a really fun event, very active, everyone, everyone who, from the council was able to join us. So thank you for everyone who stopped by, was there to help, so. I think it was a great year.
Had a lot of fun.
Yeah, looking forward to next year. What I was mentioning to the chief is, just for everyone's awareness, the opioid operational command center is actually doing a town hall series on community overdose, just action. It will, in Carroll County, it will be at the Carroll County Public Safety Training Center at fifty Kate Wagner Road on Wednesday, January seventeenth at six-thirty P.M. And Special Secretary for our opioid response at the state level, Emily Keller, will be present and talking about some of the state level strategic plan that's going on. So definitely encourage the community to be present, to show up and that that's going on in our community, so.
Thank you for that announcement. Excuse me, anyone else?
I had one other thing in reference to the Joy property. We had had discussion in the last meeting about how long they've been there. And I did specifically ask in the conversation, and it has been nineteen-seventeen, that the property was there. The business, mostly the same, gas station, it started out and sort of convenience store, always the service space, but, and it's changed owners a couple of times. But it's, but it's been there since nineteen-seventeen, so it's a long time that the, that the business has been in our community. I just wanna share that, cause there was a little bit of question about that in the last council meeting, we did clear it up.
Thank you. Yeah, I was questioning it, so I'm glad that, that you said that.
Well, and I think the confusion was that nineteen-seventies, I think that's when one of the business, around there is when the business changed hands.
Okay.
And that's when sort of the newer model of the business, not the most recent version, but one of the newer models of the business came into place. And I think that's probably where some of the confusion came from, maybe, I don't know. one of the newer models of the business came into place, and I think that's probably where some of the confusion came from, maybe, I don't know.
No, I think that makes sense, cause I remember um the previous uh business owner and property owner, they were one and the same, um had written in the soap on the window about thirty-seven years or something of service, and then we had a a good ten years without anything there, so, thank you. Um I have one announcement. Is is there anyone else with anything? Um I have one announcement, and it um it was what Councilman Grassley threatened me to uh not forget to announce, so I'm doing that now, um not forgetting. And uh I really would have, so thank you, Councilman Grassley. We are having our annual holiday decorating contest um on the eighteenth, which is a week from this evening, on Monday, at uh six o'clock.
Dark thirty.
Dark thirty, at six, dark thirty, actually, it's just six o'clock, and um so make sure you have your all the lights on, and um
Harlem Lane.
Wow, that was actually one of the best of those I've ever heard. We'll be coming to Harlem as well as all other streets um and neighborhoods in town, and uh only the uh people sitting at this table will not be participating in the contest, so, uh but we will be enjoying our judging, and um so we'll have to work out those kinks as far as who's driving and who's meeting where and what, so. Um but anyway, uh so that brings us to uh an announcement about a closed session that we're going to have after we go into recess here. Uh we are having a closed session this evening, and that meeting is proposed to be closed pursuant to the general provisions article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, section three dash three oh five B, and this evening it's number eight, to consult with staff, consultants, or other individuals about pending or potential litigation. And this evening, um for the first time ever, we're gonna be speaking about potential uh or pending litigation with the Warfield folks. So um again, another joke, ha ha, and um so at at this point, I just uh would like to call for a five-minute recess to clear the uh gallery so that we can go into closed session, and we will be returning to open session at the end of our closed session meeting. Thank you for everyone's attendance this evening. Five-minute recess.